All right. Call the meeting to order for the January 8, 2025 Planning Board Meeting 602. My name is Stephanie Slush. I'm the Chair of the Planning Board. To my right, I have Jimmy Tarr, Alternate Chair. All the way at the end, I have Doug Finn. To my left, I have John Jeffress. And my far end over here, Lee Bell. We have our Administrative Assistant Lori Picard. And our Town Administrator Andrew Levine here as well. So the first item on the agenda as always is Public Forum. This is an opportunity for anyone who is not on the agenda to speak tonight and bring something, anything forward to the attention of the Planning Board. With that being said, I know it looks like, I think you two are on the agenda, so I will, we can close Public Forum and go to Approval of the Minutes before we speak to our guests tonight. So we have the meeting minutes from December 4th, if y'all had had a chance to take a look.
I've had a chance to review. I'm happy to make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Now, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Minutes from December 4th have been approved. All right. First item on our agenda is a conversation about potential project at 10 West Street, which is parcel ID number 224-24-0. I got an email late last week about this, just inquiring about the process, and I told them that we had a meeting tonight, but this particular project, as proposed, we'll learn more about it. I just got very top level in an email. It's up for Site Plan Review, and so this is not the official Site Plan Review. This is more just an introduction to us and to the project. So if you want to, John will be able to hear them if they issue with this. Yeah, either move up to the chair and introduce yourself first for the record and then go in.
Okay. I'm Dan Bonham from Bonham &amp; Douglas Architects. I was here for the tennis and pickleball facility last summer that you folks approved. And I'm here with Amy McDonough, my client, who is interested in opening a pizza and pinball restaurant and facility in the former Lumber Liquidators location at 10 West Street. It's the northerly portion of the, maybe commonly known as the Danko Mini Mall or building. I've outlined it here. This is the plot plan with, this is the portion of the building here to the north. And then you can see kind of here the situation within the neighborhood and just off the town line. So my understanding is it's a business with a mixed-use overlay, is a zoning district, and we wouldn't be making any changes to the building footprint other than maybe a walk-in cooler or something attached to the side of the building that would be entered from inside. To be determined there, though, primarily no exterior improvements other than some paint and signage. Anything else you want to add to that?
No, I guess I'll just introduce myself too. Say, I'm Amy McDonough. I've lived here for about 20 years. I'm a renewable energy developer, geologist by schooling, renewable energy by career, and I just recently retired after 14 years, working in our, and running our New York business. And I want to work local, so I'm a developer, and I love pinball. I'm also a founder of the North Hampton Bells and Chimes, which is a women's pinball enthusiast club. I hold tournaments right now at my house. And it was through this growth of my enthusiasm about pinball that this idea actually germinated. And when I started looking around at this concept, I decided I really needed a bar, I needed alcohol, I needed food to go along with the entertainment. And that led me to liquor licenses, which led me to available property in towns that had liquor licenses, which led me to here. And so the project has kind of grown to the size of the building, and I think there's a lot of opportunity there. But yeah, that's, that's the idea. Restaurant in front, arcade in the middle, bistro, family, not elevated, not fast food. Wood-fired brick oven is actually the entertainment of the restaurant, if you will. You'll see people cooking, and the whole menu will be based on that style of food.
How big is that portion? I'm just curious where footage is at.
7,104 square.
What a great mesh with the carding, too.
Right?
Like, what a day.
Family day.
Do you have, do you have restaurant experience?
Just 10 years of service, being a server myself. So, and, and that was all through college, and it ended. So I'll be hiring people. I'll be running the business, and I'll have my metrics for success, but there'll be a chef, and there'll be an event manager, and there'll be a bar manager. Everyone needed to run the business.
So one kind of interesting thing about the building is, as it goes back, the grade actually steps down in the very back portion. Maybe roughly a third of this long building here is a very high open space. It's kind of perfect for a function room, for lack of a better term, maybe more organized for, you know, bar kind of area in the back, and then maybe some potential for a little stage with some music. But the, the space is kind of perfect for it, so birthday parties, et cetera.
What did you find out about liquor licenses?
Just that there's one available.
There is?
Yeah.
Yeah, not our purview, but interesting to know.
Yep.
Yeah, and we can't really have, like I said, a full conversation or, you know, about everything tonight, just because it's not the Site Plan Review piece. I know this was just intro, but yeah, excited about the potential opportunities. I will say that we passed the Hatfield Design Guidelines recently, and you know, you're probably, I think they're around for that project. That's something to refer to if you plan on any exterior changes.
Really signage would be what we'd be most interested in, you know, obviously some paint.
Yep.
But yeah, signage would be our.
And I think that part of the building is like, is it wood on the outside anyway? It's kind of.
The front is, yeah, the street side, yeah. The rest is just metal panel like a typical butler building.
Nice. Okay.
And it has this interesting courtyard inside, too, which is pretty cool. You can actually see through this portion here, this kind of dogleg is low, and has windows on both sides, you can see into this outdoor courtyard. So potential for some little patio space out there, you know, some outdoor yard games and things like that in the summer.
Yeah, and so the way the Site Plan Review works is it's not, it just notifies the butters. That's part of the reason why we're asking to get any application materials, like hopefully a couple of weeks in advance to us, so we have, so the butters get enough of a notice.
And so for our plan, we would, we need to, I assume diagrammatically, it would be sufficient show the utilities on site. Do we need a survey, a stamp survey with those things? It's town water and sewer in that location.
With a Site Plan Review, those are rare for us.
I can look it up if you need, you know, if you don't know it off the top of your head.
Are you looking to change the location of the utilities?
No, no, no.
Are you looking to put construction in place on top of them, next to them, adjacent to them?
No, I don't think so.
Is the electric service overhead or underground?
I don't know.
It's in the walls.
Well, he's asking.
Oh, the service, oh, it's.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I see a wire.
I see a wire right there.
That's probably, that's probably telephone or cable or something, but yeah, I mean, we can look at all that. Likely, we're going to be working with Tiagno, at least in the pre-construction. They're very familiar with, you know, all the utilities and things like that. They've already been assessed.
I think where you're going, though, is like if there's going to be changes that leave that.
Those changes.
Right, yeah, in which case, I don't care. Yeah.
Right.
To you, don't listen, to you, I would be interested in knowing what the applicant would be interested in doing with the outside. Noise, live music, onsite music, amplified music, lighting.
Yep.
We're going to be notifying the butters, so they're going to have an opportunity to comment and understand what the impacts might be, if the activity is going to go late into the evening, if there's going to be activity, you know, all day, every day, and every weekend day, or something like that.
Parking exterior line.
Parking exterior line, basically the exterior appearance, yeah, yeah. I would assume that our fire department and our Board of Health are going to manage the interior details, egress, multiple points in the building, that sort of thing, so I'm not as worried about that.
Yeah, anticipating what a butters would be concerned about, that seems.
Yep, and also probably information about if there's deeded parking spaces that go with that unit, understanding what that is.
Business hours, weekend hours.
Business hours, weekend hours. I'm sure that the parking could overlap if they're going to be open when the furniture store next door is going to be closed. No, no harm, no foul if they're taking some extra spaces. Those would be the things I'd be interested in understanding.
Yep.
The other thing is that you already have two restaurants in that immediate area, which speaks volumes for your desire to put another one there. I don't think we're overloaded with restaurants in any way, and I think that it's, it would be the perfect place, if you want to know the truth.
And if the hotel, with the hotel being approved right next door.
Yeah, well, he seems to have vanished in the, in the wind.
What is, what is the property immediately to the north on the same side of the road?
That's the hotel.
That hotel.
That show in the house that's going, that little.
Oh, oh, right, fair enough, okay.
Right, that's empty.
It's still on the map.
Okay, all right, that's, then actually there's, and directly across the road, there's just business, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I know there's.
There's, is a ranch that's in North Hampton that maybe be able to see it, but isn't directly across.
Yeah, no, it's farther south.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that's the only residence.
Okay, no, fair enough.
It's a good spot, good in and out.
Yep. So do you have any other questions for us that we can't answer them?
Just out of personal interest, like arcade games as well, or just, just pinball?
Yeah, I do, I, I will have, I mean, my passion is pinball, but I will have some arcade games. I've been doing a informal poll, if anyone wants to share with me what their favorite ones are, because I want to have daytime birthday, I missed it, I want to have daytime, I want to hear, I want to have daytime birthday parties. And I, pinball is not really kids, little kids, what I mean, and they don't really go for pinball. So I'll have some of the classic things, like skee ball or a basketball throwing game, and some kind of video arcade game, too. What, what did I not hear?
I'm just remembering.
Who did you say, Gallagher?
I said Gallagher, no, I'm remembering.
I actually already owe it, so it'll be there.
There was a pizza joint in the center of North Hampton on the corner of Masonic Street and Main Street, run by the Visas family when I was growing up, and they had a two-person sit-down Pac-Man machine. You could put your food, your drink on the glass top, controls are right there, man, that was, and then two players, so the, the screen would flip. That was top. That was A1 gaming technology of the day.
If you want to relive that, they at least have a Donkey Kong table at DuckQuarters.
Okay.
You can go, go play it.
An original '78 Asteroids sit down at my house.
Nice.
Working?
Working.
Wow.
You should hold tournaments in your house.
We should have meetings in his house.
All right, awesome. Well, I'm assuming you're going to come in for next month, then, is that your target?
Yeah, we'll talk about it and, you know, put together a plan.
Yeah.
We have some, still some design work to do. I assume we do some renderings for the exterior, so you can get an idea for what that's going to look like, and anything else, lighting, parking, et cetera, we'll include that.
Actually, one of the other things, adjusting from the photo, and I don't know how much control the developer would have over it, but that tree at the corner of the building.
Yep.
Yeah.
I'd like to learn more about its fate.
It's a nice little birch tree, but it might need to go.
Maybe we can move it?
I think it's too big to.
Replace it with something else.
That's an operation.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, and that's the other thing, is our design guidelines do speak to landscaping to some extent, and just having big blank bare concrete or pavement isn't necessarily encouraged.
Yeah, there's planting beds all across the front, so I'm sure that would be incorporated into the design.
Yep, cool, thanks.
All right, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks.
The board is supportive.
Yeah, it does. The board is in approval of the preliminary.
I'm going to start saving my quarters.
All right, thank you.
Thanks so much for coming in. I think that you got a pretty positive response here.
Um, yeah.
That's a great idea. I love that.
Yeah, we'll just have to see, yeah, like we said, what the butters' concerns are and, and take that.
Well, you know, Peter will come in and complain about something.
Pizza.
Bye, thank you.
You're welcome. Nice meeting you.
Warm.
All right. So next item on the agenda is the ADU Bylaw Update. We, as in we, is Doug, myself, and Andrew, and Bella, and Bella who's going to be here tonight, she's out of town for death in the family, so she's traveling and dealing with that. So, but, and over the course between last meeting and this meeting, we met with Attorney Mullen in order to prepare the ADU Bylaw Update so that we could have a public hearing for it next month, in order to get it on the town meeting warrant. So we were trying to finalize this, and there are a couple outstanding questions we have that we wanted to discuss with the board. There's a couple different documents here, so.
Looking for that.
The one that's landscape here, that says proposed revisions, that, that is, this is the one that's the draft, and then the one that's in portrait there with some red commentary, is Doug responding to Tom's edits, Tom is our town council, and then Tom responded in these red, red comments. So I just wanted to make sure you had context for that.
Yeah.
And then, one, if you had any questions, and then, two, I would want to bring forth the kind of things we needed to debate and discuss in order to finalize this.
One of the first things that comes up, if I may.
Go for it.
I'm going to set up a hypothetical situation. Someone has a 1.4 acre lot property. They only have 220 feet of frontage, so it only has enough frontage for a single residential lot. They have a right to build an ADU. Let's say they build it according to specifications, they build it outback. They then create a condominium association and condoize both the house and the, and the ADU, enabling them to sell them separately. Do we care about that?
Well, are you talking, are you talking about enough frontage for two, two buildings?
No.
No. No, I'm not talking about dividing the land. I'm saying, yeah, they condoize the land and they sell the, there's case law which says that no zoning bylaw can regulate ownership of a property. I'm summarizing, but, and that's what the attorney brings up in, oh, a comment halfway down the first page. CHR General v. City of Newton, yeah. I was originally trying to like say, no, you can't subdivide the property and sell the ADU separately, but honestly, even if they did that, a 650 or 700 square foot home on a very small plot of land is only going to sell for a certain amount of money. A condoized ADU is going to sell for even less.
Because it doesn't come with the land.
It doesn't come with the land, and there's other fees and owner, of ownership attached. At that point, it still becomes a more affordable way to create equity for a young family or for a senior to maintain equity, so that, I, I'm up in the air about it.
Yeah, because I actually was speaking to someone who's younger, like my age, about, you know, the ADUs, and they're like, yeah, I understand the concept of it, but now you're creating a, I think I mentioned brought this up at the last meeting, but like you're creating a house, a property that has, you know, might be worth $500,000, and now they can put an ADU on it, and now it's worth $800,000, and what are you actually helping here? Like, and then you're selling a, when they go to sell, they're going to sell this $800,000 property that just makes it less affordable for people to get homeownership, if that's a goal that someone wants.
How, I guess my question to you, Doug, would be.
Oh, I don't really, I don't really care if there's a condoization of that personally.
I'm not sure that I do either. I guess my question to you is, how do you see the intention of what we're trying to do here? How do you see that perverted by the condoization, as you, as you call it? I'm not even sure.
Well.
Of the, I mean, is, I mean, how does it, how does it become something that we, that we don't see happening, that, that would be a negative?
So initially, I had the same initial knee-jerk reaction to the idea of a condoization of a, of an ADU as I did to the state's regulations that says you can't mandate ownership, like owner occupancy. I'm like, well, why not? We should be able to do that.
That's what we want.
We, but we can't do that. So with, with a condo, the first thing I said is, oh, I don't want this to be a way for just some developer to grab a house, drop an ADU, and then sell them both and make But ultimately, if you take that house, you condoize it and you build an ADU, you condoize it, you're selling two properties that have less value than the original property would, or than, you know, the, the structures on the original dwelling. So it still becomes a lower market value, a lower selling point, and still helps to make it slightly more affordable. So I'm personally, I don't have a problem with the idea of condoization at this point.
Yeah, I think, I think it kind of roundabout comes back to the goal, regard, regardless of the intention.
Right. A 750 square foot condo, even if it's a separate unit, is only going to sell at a condo price, which still in this area is $300,000 or less. That's pretty damn affordable.
And even if we cared, we can't care.
With, with that discussion, my thought is, I don't think that we as a board, well, me as a member of the board, that, that bothers me.
Yep.
It's been ruled. It's been ruled.
If it's a way.
We can't mandate ownership.
If it's a way around to get cheaper housing on the market that is not just rental, then great.
Um, kind of related to that, does Hatfield, has Hatfield adopted a zoning bylaw that prevents timeshare of any residential property?
No, I don't believe so.
There was one adopted in Edgar Town specifically to avoid someone from buying a residential house and then selling ownership shares in that house to get around the idea of it turning into a hotel.
Similarly, like we don't have an Airbnb restriction.
Short-term rental restriction.
We don't have anything like that on the books yet.
Really?
Like, and I, and so timeshare, I just keyword searched it, no, there's nothing.
Okay, fair enough.
It's something that we could keep an eye on, and if it becomes an issue, it becomes an issue.
There was a couple of other things that we wanted to bring to the board.
There was a question around the ADUs, so it was like, if the, if there's a lot that already has a house, that already has an apartment on it, or basically already has two dwellings.
Right.
And it's like a pre-existing non-conforming, it's already been there for forever, by right, I'm going to, hopefully I got this right, by right, they're allowed to have another ADU because it, or no, that was what.
I think we clarified that.
Yes, Tom.
I think we clarified that. It's if there's, well, and I think honestly, and it's probably going to be tested in court eventually. The Affordable Homes Act specifically says, on any single-family zoned property, as soon as you have two dwelling units, it's no longer a single-family property. If it's zoned for single fam, I don't even know what single-family zoning is. It doesn't even make sense to me.
I don't.
That's not a classification that's anyone uses. We use residential, we use, you know, and dense residential, we don't use single-family zoning, but I don't know what that means. The only thing I can interpret it to mean is, on any lot where there's only a single-family property, an ADU is allowed by right. That's basically what I understand.
But if they already have something already there, they're not allowed another one by right? Or they come to us where there's.
Okay, so here's, here's a, a question. My house has an, has an accessory apartment, not an ADU per se, but an accessory apartment that's been there for 40 years. Could that property then have another ADU on it?
I think that's going to.
That's what we're talking about.
That's not tested, we don't know.
On the second page, is an ADU can be within the building.
Right.
ADU can be attached to the building, ADU can be separated from the building. An ADU is just.
And is it considered, is it considered a multifamily? Is it considered an ADU?
So you have one ADU, which is.
Or, or you have a two-unit dwelling.
Right.
Either way, the, whether or not you can get, have an ADU by right is, I think, I don't think we have guidance on that yet.
Okay.
We don't know.
Right, I'm just, I'm not, not about to do that, to say the least, but I'm just, you know, thinking if somebody has, is in my situation, but has a little more property, you know, I couldn't put it anywhere because I have a swamp in front of my house, but.
One of the, one of the other questions, it's kind of relates to this, where someone has a principal dwelling, and they have a guest house or whatever that they've been renting out for years, it's been there for years, it's pre-existing, non-conforming at this point.
That's where I was getting, yeah.
By, the law basically says that provided it meets the definitions of an ADU, it's an ADU, and now it's allowed by right. And I, I was trying to put in something that says, well, sure, it's allowed by right, but what if it's not really a properly-built ADU? What if it's a converted chicken coop with only one door going in and not a proper bathroom or something like that? Isn't there some minimum specification to certify that it's an actual dwelling?
Certificate of Design, it's the building department.
Wouldn't that be a Kyle thing?
Well, and that's, that's what I kind of suggested, is that, you know, provided it gets, has a CO or can get a CO, then it's your ADU and you're fine, and congratulations. Be a piece, whatever, but.
Bless the idea, the actual construction.
Right.
Yeah, it's Kyle's thing.
But if it's still literally just a chicken coop with somebody put a bed in it, that's not an ADU, that's a.
Chicken coop with a bed.
That's a chicken coop with a bed, and that's not a habitable structure.
Right.
Doesn't automatically get, I would love us to go through town, because every ADU is another dollar sign on the assessor's tax rolls. I mean, that's always a good thing, so.
The other questions we have to ask are, are we, do we need to address ADUs on duplexes in any way? Because right now, if it's a duplex, you're allowed, it's a similar question, but if you're, already have a duplex or multifamily or whatever, would we allow also an extra ADU now?
On any single-family dwelling zone property, an ADU shall be allowed by right.
One ADU.
One ADU?
One ADU shall be allowed by right, that's the state law.
Yep.
Is a duplex on a, even on a residential lot, is that a single-family zoned dwelling lot?
Right, I think we'll, yeah.
And I don't know that that's been answered anywhere.
Right, so we'll just leave it, and, because I would be more inclined of like, I don't want to have to do this again at the next town meeting, too, so if we just.
I, I think the less is more is a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
We've, yeah, if you want a second ADU.
You're kind of guessing at what single-zoned means.
Yeah, it's, yeah. If you want an ADU and you, you know, otherwise meet the qualifications, great, fantastic, go to the building inspector, get your permit.
Yep.
Single-family zone is just any zone that will accept a single-family zone. It can be a mixed-use area that will, you know, so that's your vanishing, it's not, it's telling you about any of the zones that you can go into.
So then, in that case, property that has a special, by special permit, a four-unit townhouse, they have a right to put an ADU on that?
If that's what they're saying, any single-family zone, which we know isn't a zone, isn't a common zone.
Yeah, it's not a common zone, so, so.
So, yeah, so it would have to be, it would have to be anywhere that you could build a single-family house.
A house.
And if it happens to be, and if, and if you happen to be able to build a townhouse there, too, then it would seem to me.
You get to put an ADU.
That that would be the insinuation of the language.
Right.
Yeah, because right now, we allow, we allow up to six units in one building.
So it would seem to me that that, that.
They could also then add an extra, an ADU, but it just would have to be, would be small and fit within the.
It would have to fit all the, all the setbacks and, and area.
Part of the definition of an ADU is that the ADU may not exceed the smaller of 900 square feet or one-half the floor area of the principal dwelling on the lot. So if you've got a duplex, what's the principal dwelling?
Hmm.
I think it would, I think it would by default be the, the larger of the two.
The larger of the two.
Well, she's talking about, you know, a building with six residences.
Two or three or four or five units or whatever, I would all.
Exact same size.
What if it's a house that was split all up? Would you consider it the house to be the, anyway?
So these are the conversations that some judge at some appeals court is going to have to have amongst themselves and his peers. It's not for us to decide. We, the zoning bylaw as is written provides for an ADU by right with certain conditions like, okay, it needs to be set back from the road, it needs to be more subdued than the principal dwelling. If it can't meet that, you come to the planning board for a site plan review. Show us what you want to do and show us why you want to do that. We go, you know, yeah, that looks pretty good, but because, let's put some trees here, let's put some shrubs there, let's make sure that the parking is behind the building, not in front. Go, have fun. Get them out, you know, the goal is still to say yes to the ADU. And we have a process in the bylaw that says, on a lot where there's already an ADU, you can apply for a special permit for a second. And that's where we pile on additional parking regs, designs, greater setbacks, whatever we want to do. But that's there and that's permitted by the state law.
I'm glad you teed that up, because those are like the rest of the outstanding questions that I wanted to-
Has to do with the special permit?
Right, like, do we want to require site plan review for all ADUs or just the ones that are more, ones that like, right, that might, like you're saying, might need to be in the front of the house, in front of the primary dwelling, or?
That's a weird line to draw. We only want to review things in the front?
Well, the ADU regs that we've drawn up say, ADU shall be considered an accessory use and shall be allowed by right in all residential districts provided that the following stands, standards are met. That it's the only ADU on the lot, that it complies with all existing setbacks for the zone, that, yeah, and we say, in addition to an existing habitable structure as an ADU is permitted. The ADU is subordinate to the principal dwelling in that it'll be placed further back on the public way or it'll be lower in height than the principal dwelling, or, and then-
Now you're prohibiting things in front.
What's that?
That's prohibiting things in front.
No, no, it's, if it meets these criteria, you go and get your building permit.
Right.
These are, these are criteria that can be measured with a ruler, a tape measure, a plan. And then it says, on the next page-
What page are you wanting to-
Uh, three or five of the landscape format. I initially thought a variance, and then it went into special permit, and I don't agree with special permit. I think it should be site plan review, and it should be under the planning board's purview. This is kind of outdated language. As a matter of fact-
Yeah, you mentioned it here.
Please go to-
The second page of your comment.
The second page.
Where it says be site plan review?
Yeah, be site plan review. If it doesn't meet all the requirements, the building inspector refers it to the planning board. The planning board conducts a site plan review. And just basically, we say, okay, you want to put it in front of the principal dwelling? Okay, it's going to be fine there. It's not going to cause any harm to the neighbors or any reasonable impact to the neighborhood, that's fine.
But we might ask them to put some shrubs, or?
You can condition approval through site plan review if you want to.
You can't deny their approval.
Right, when it comes to site plan review, you can't deny.
So we're talking about, if you go down King Street, almost to Hatfield Street, on the right-hand side, there's a house that's setback-aways, and then they put an ADU of some sort in front of it, attached to the house. You know what I'm talking?
I think so.
Yeah, it's set, and they just, they built it about two years ago. They built the front part on, it's lower than the house, because the house has a little, there's a little rise there. It's lower than the house, it's in front, and it's not blocking anything. So if somebody wants to do that here, how do we respond? Is it okay to put it in front of the house?
The building inspector would refer the proposal to us. We'd do a site plan review, we'd say, oh, the plan looks fine.
Okay.
But then, then what's the point of the site plan review if we're just going to say yes?
We have to say it.
You have to say it.
Right, well, that's what I mean, so what is-
Why stick your nose in if you, if it's a rubber stamp, right, the waste of business? Unless-
Because the site plan review notifies a butters when, it's only different-
In here, it's written that you doesn't have to notify butters. And you can't let a butters objections to an ADU.
Can't stop it.
It can't stop it, that can't be relied upon for denial.
Right, the only thing that we could do is like, like I said, put some trees here, right?
Make suggestions.
You can condition it with those types of things, but you can't stop it.
As subject to additional restrictions as may be imposed by the municipality.
I mean, if you want to remove the criteria entirely and just make a flat rule that says an ADU shall be allowed as an accessory used to any single-family dwelling, period. I'm not sure that I would object to that.
Yeah, especially if the site plan review-
Well, it seems to me, having all these criterion that don't necessarily, I mean, if it's by right, and then we have all these criterion.
The only, yeah.
The state gives us just a little bit of wiggle room, right? Additional restrictions may be imposed by the municipality included, but not limited to, that's the important part. Additional size restrictions, restrictions on short-term rental, you know, as long as you don't unreasonably restrict the creation of an accessory. It's not a short-term rental. So it's like you have to pass them, but you have some tiny margin.
What if there's like this historic home, right, somewhere right around here, and someone wants to put an ADU that's modern as hell, plopped right in front of it?
We punt it to a store.
They can't really do anything.
Not the ability to regulate it, yeah.
They don't have anything to regulate it, but like, that's an example of something like that, right? Like, a lot of these more modular type of ADUs do look a little more modern.
It doesn't look like we're allowed to say no.
I think, I think you leave the language as, as, as put, and then-
And allow for the site plan review?
What's that?
And allow for the site plan review?
Yeah.
For the things that are like questionable like that?
There's a lot of things, I think, that are, that are going to have to morph, and I would, I would side on being able to have some say whether or not it'll stand up that we have that say long-term. I would like to keep it in our, as we look at it, I think I'd like to keep that in our court if we can. And then hopefully be able to support it legally down the road.
Right. It would, it would prevent haphazard construction.
Well, I think, given the example of throwing an ADU out on Main Street in front of the Sophia Smith House by right, is, you know, I mean-
Yeah, that's, that's not-
Which could happen, if we take, if, you know, at least we would have some semblance of a process that we would have to go through as it's written, so I kind of like it like that.
I think it also puts the, the onus on the owner to understand what he's asked, that he or she is asking for. And by saying there's a site plan review, I think people would be more prepared when they came. If we say, the site plan review is part of this, and, you know, we're going to do, we have to have a site plan review.
And the site plan review would be if it doesn't, if it doesn't meet these other things.
Right.
If it does meet these things, they don't have to come to us at all, it's the building inspector. It'd be like, if the building inspector's like, ooh, this might be an issue, then you-
If nothing else, it triggers a conversation.
Right.
This might, the idea of a site plan review might get triggered for some, and using an example of a friend who owns a house right here on Main Street, he has a back garage that's about two feet off the property line, it's been there forever. If he decided to tear that down and put an ADU there instead, he'd go to the building inspector, and the building inspector says, no, you're too close to the property line, but I'm going to forward this to the planning board. We could then look and say, you're replacing an existing structure with another structure, you're not going to increase the non-conformity, you're not moving it closer to the line, you're going to put it in the same footprint, the garage is behind the house, the neighbors, you know, have expressed no objection, good, off you go. That's simple, even though the new ADU would actually be in violation of the setback rules, we would say, no, you're, you get to rebuild. MGL Chapter 48, Section 3, the new structure shall not be more non-conforming than the existing, that's fine.
That would be another example of-
That's another example of site plan review.
I think it's just like, to also help give the building inspector some cover for decisions that might be a little like, yeah.
Sketchy.
Yep.
Was there anything else?
So, the last piece that is a good follow-up from this conversation is, so there's, technically, there's nothing stopping someone from having a second ADU also on their property, right?
Just the lot size, right?
Yes and no.
Yes.
State law says that a town shall provide a special permit process for a second ADU on a lot. We don't have a choice, we have to consider a second ADU by special permit.
But the special permit is not by site plan review in that we can reject it.
Yes, correct, it can be denied, yes.
So that's-
It's not a by right, it is by permission, and it can be denied.
And we're all, I think that's appropriate.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, I just wanted to highlight that as well. Is there any other site plan review criteria that we would want to consider? That would be referred to us, or that we'd want to say, things need to be met in order for it to be by right? Or do we get enough there?
So the criteria starts with item number one at the bottom of the second page there.
One ADU, or you're talking about the second?
I'm talking about, sorry, going back to one ADU, it says on the second page here, the ADU standards. If it meets all of these standards, it's by right, and if not, if it's a questionable thing, it'll come to us for site plan review. Are there anything else we want to add into the standards, or should we be considering in the standards that then, for it to come, for what we are looking for?
I like it as written.
It's specific enough, it's all, but it's all adjudicatory, so, yeah, we can interpret it on a case-by-case basis. But again, site plan review is, the answer is yes, figure out the best way to get there, so.
Okay. And then one of the other questions from the attorney is, do we want to require site plan review for all ADUs? And I think we say, no.
Absolutely not.
And I think we're taking like the middle-of-the-road approach for a lot of this, right? Like, we're not trying to be too restrictive, we're not trying to be overly permissive, like, we're trying to be considerate of like, these one-off things that could really impact a neighborhood in a negative way, but also, I openly supportive of ADUs, so.
We have to be accepting of the fact that this is, this is happening.
Right, and it's not very far off from what we already approved last year.
It's real close. This is our opportunity to put a finger print on it.
Yep. But also not being too narrow, that we have to change this again next year when there's more guidance.
We took kind of a smallish step last year, we're taking another step this year. Yeah.
I think small steps are the way to go, as opposed to ruffling feathers any more than we're going to anyways.
Although the state kind of handed that down to us, so.
Then we have cover. The proposed changes still preserve the short-term rental restriction, doesn't it, or?
I don't think we can do that.
You say here, yeah.
It's not intended to-
ADU shall not be used as either a short-term rental or a timeshare property, or a bed and breakfast. It's a Hatfield special little, you know.
Where are you reading from, I'm sorry?
Well, in the landscape, page three or five.
Three or five.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, yep.
Shall not be, and the attorney said, all we can do is, an ADU shall not be used as, which is fine.
It's the best of verbs for that.
Yeah.
So you can't bed and breakfast it, you can't timeshare it, and you can't, as whatever 64G Section 1 says, you can't short-term.
Because the intention is to try and create home-
Long-term housing residence. Residence, not commercial.
So that's a good little flavor, and it fits within the, you know, what minor little margins the towns are allowed.
So just to open a little window into the complete opposite side of the coin, the town of Edgar Town, which I used to work for, they're going to be considering a zoning bylaw change in April that says, every residence in town shall be permitted to be used as a short-term rental by right. They want to commercialize their residences, their neighborhoods.
Also, much different community, it's a vacation community, right?
But when you can get $15,000 a week for a short-term rental for six months out of the summer-
Go stay at Mabel's or something?
Well, and this doesn't-
Would you ever rent to somebody long-term? Why would you ever bother giving somebody a chance to have, be able to have a place to live there?
And then you don't have to deal with tenants' rights and all that stuff.
Tenants, you can shut the house down in the winter and winterize it, not heat it. Your insurance costs might go up in the summer, but goes way down in the winter.
So that's, yeah, and then, I mean, that's the other thing too, is like, the ADU shall not be used as the short-term rental, but what's stopping someone from living in the ADU, and then they rent out, they short-term rental the primary?
Well, that's, that's true now, right?
Right, which is fine now.
Yeah.
It's just we don't, I guess it's like, the motivation behind someone building an ADU shouldn't be to, for an Airbnb, it should be a more long-term rental situation, is what, is what the spirit of this is.
Think of a few houses along the other side of the street over here. You put an ADU halfway back on the lot with some nice landscaping and a little sitting patio that looks out over the river, you can get a couple hundred bucks a night.
Right.
That could be pretty lucrative. That's not what we want to do.
Right.
I, sorry.
I like it.
I don't think that's what we want to do, somebody correct me if I'm wrong.
No, I like that phrase.
And I mean, that's something, if, this is the whole point of having the public hearing on this next, next month, if there's a contingent of listeners-
I expect there'll be.
That want to come in and have push on that, they can, and we can talk about it. All right, so I think we're pretty good to go in finalizing these comments and having something ready to publish in the Gazette, and having a public hearing next meeting.
Okay.
I'm pretty, I'm pretty confident that we could address and assuage any concerns that come to us next month.
Right, yeah, I think we've definitely done our due diligence, and it's not, it's, a lot of it is out of our hands, and the few little pieces that we do have control over, we, I think, agree, and-
Craft it nicely.
So next, at our next meeting, we're going to have a public hearing on this, and we're going to be doing the site plan review, likely, the site plan review on the Starlight potential restaurant. So be prepared for a little more of an active meeting, than, interactive meeting than what we've had in the past couple of months. Are we all set with ADU bylaw update, any other comments? All right, the next item on the agenda, the other thing we've been working on-
No, I just want to say, thank you for the work.
Yeah, man.
Yeah, I actually wanted to say, thank you-
We're riding your coattails on this.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the support and the feedback, and, you know, I'm happy to be slapped down if I'm overstepping in any place, but I do appreciate the support for that.
Yeah, and I also want to say, I support, want to thank our town administrator, who's been also active in these conversations as well. And he was here earlier, but had to step out for another meeting, so, just wanted to say that as well. And similarly, because he also helped draft this with Bella's support, this D L T A, which is something, something technical assistance, I forget.
Local technical assistance.
Divisional, yeah, local technical assistance. This is a pot of money that the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission has to dole out every year for projects, and so you have to apply with a one-pager of how you would like funds to, how you'd like to request for funds. They don't need a money amount, they kind of like figure that out for us, which is kind of interesting. But based on what we were talking about at our last meeting, we talked to PVPC about what we were thinking, because the whole thing is like, the strategy around what pot of money, what grant to use, what thing for, is like, is a question, because there's no like right or wrong answer, it's kind of like, what do we want to prioritize now, when owing the funding streams and that kind of thing. So where we landed was, because they helped, PVPC helped us with our comprehensive plan, they're invested in helping us see implementation of that. And so with that, they kind of recommended that we put one support for the implementation committee, whatever that's called, the action committee, whatever, to help convene this committee and start, and just like, help set up the structure to move, to get the committee off the ground and running to help implement comprehensive plan. Which, yes, touches things that the planning, under planning board's purview, but like, all different boards and committees have different responsibilities and projects potentially under implementation of the comprehensive plan, so that's going to be one piece of the request. And then the two pieces of the request that are directly related to us is updating our housing production plan. We are asking for minimal assistance for the housing production plan based on the fact that a lot of the research was just done with, so like, our housing production plan is from 2015. So I'm sure, using that plus all the data from the open space recreation plan that just got finalized, or is in the process of being finalized, and updated comprehensive plan, we have a lot of the data and the makings of an updated housing production plan, so we would do most of that in-house. Bella and Andrew, and I'm sure us and the board, and whomever else wants to be a part of this housing kind of plan committee, or, you know, ad hoc committee. I know that there's a few people who worked on the last one that we could invite and ask if they would want to be a part of this, this one. The plan is to work on that and do that this year, which shouldn't be that much of a lift. And then the big thing that would impact us the most, and it'd be the beginning kickoff of a longer-term project, is for them to do a diagnostic of our zoning map and our bylaws. So what that means is, going over our map and our bylaws tooth and comb and suggesting like, where there are deficiencies, where there are rooms for improvement, but not making those recommendations yet. It would just be like flagging the things that are issues, so that then, with a subsequent round of funding, either through D L T A next year or through state funding, the technical, I forget the name of the grant that's open this summer, that we could apply for grant funding there to then keep moving along and updating our zoning bylaws and map. That would probably happen in the next couple of years after that.
I'm fully supportive of the diagnostic review. It's basically them looking at our zoning bylaws with an objective eye and saying, these things are problems. these things are problems. These are things you're gonna wanna address. And that gives us a to-do list. We would then, as we take on the zoning revision, we would then prioritize those things in order to annually make some changes, bring them before town meeting, slowly build up confidence with residents saying, okay, they're doing some good things. They're cleaning things up, simplifying things, sharpening the edges, if you will. But it starts with a diagnostic review, so I'm fully supportive of that.
That's all.
That's the one that I'm most excited about as well. Because it's also them pointing things out that are flags and then us thinking, taking recommendations from the comprehensive plan and using those flags and taking things from the housing production plan and implementing and having them be the guides to how and why we update things the way we are gonna do them. So it's, this is due on Friday and it just needed to be one-page narrative. And they recommended we meet with them ahead of time and we did. So I, I feel confident that we would get some of these, hopefully all three of these things, but definitely a couple of them funded. And if they don't get funded, then we have state funding that we can apply for over the summer. And the other thing is the state funding, you need to have a certain requirement of town funding for that. But the DLTA funding can be that town funding. So for example, if we get these all funded and then we apply for the state funding and say we want them to do more with the, with the diagnostic or whatever, we could say the match is the DLTA funding. So it's like leveraging our, the grant funds.
What does DLTA stand for?
Oh, that was a.
We haven't figured out, but it's technical assistance.
It's like Division of Local Technical Assistance or something. Directed.
Loving that technique.
Oh.
It's like, yeah, local regional planning commissions get the money from the state and they divvy it up how they see fit.
Yes. They get the LTA funds and then they use it to fund the.
And it's, I think we, they would find out if we get this by like March. So it's a fairly quick turnaround. And so, and you have to use it within the fiscal, within the calendar year. So these are all projects that we would have done this year, which is exciting. And if they can't get all done this year, then we would apply for them for.
Again.
Yep, we could.
Yep.
Do you need a voter motion or anything?
I mean, I just wanted, yeah, I mean, I would, I guess, yeah, I would like a vote on if we feel excited about, not excited, that would be a funny thing to go on.
I move that the planning board is feeling excited.
But no, I, I mean, I also want, you know, you all to, like you support this. I know it's something we talked about. And so I just wanna make sure that we're making the decision that the board wants.
Do you think they're in one, two, three? I find the question rhetorical because I think it's, because I think it's, I mean, it's obvious that we would support it. It's well-written.
Yeah. And Bella took a first stab at it and then Andrew wrote it up and got its one page.
It serves our purposes and I think it'll probably be very effectual. Does the order reflect a priority?
I know, that's a good question.
An alphabetical order, this is the order they came out as we were writing, or they actually reflect? If they're gonna deny us one, you want it to be the third one?
No, I do not. I want that to be the first one.
Scoop these paragraphs about?
Love that.
I think the third one should be the first one.
There you go. It's just this phrase, "We want support from them in staffing and consulting with a newly formed." I think that could be actually turned into something.
Support from maybe in staffing consulting.
Right. No, but you never call somebody and say, I need support in staffing and consulting with. Right? It's like, what do you want?
Yeah. So it would be like.
Support for the newly formed.
Yeah. A new board is born and we need support, you know.
This committee will be a comprehensive.
We need help to support this board or whatever.
Yeah.
We need staff help to support this newly formed board.
I'm gonna say we like, we would like staff support for.
If they're gonna shoot something down, it's like the most nebulously phrased stuff is easy to reject because like it's, this is, they're asking for smoke. I don't know what this is. Same here. But you do, I would think you'd wanna order them in the way that, like, which one can you live without? Which two can you live without? That's the way they get approved and disapproved.
Well, I think definitely the diagnostic review should be first, cause that's the one that.
I think the second one is like the easiest thing to do. So we move it down to three. Well, we just, you're just asking for a little bit of this publishing work. You know, we need data. We need some science work here and there.
Are you asking the PVPC to do the diagnostic review or to assist the town in doing the diagnostic review?
Oh, I want them to do it.
So then change the word lead to consult. Or, I'm sorry, to conduct.
Yeah, or to deliver.
Our third ask is for the PVPC to conduct.
Deliver or conduct, yep.
Yeah, a diagnostic review, uh, of the maps to identify which bylaws to update in order to achieve our action plan goals. Yes.
Yep. Yeah, this initial view would then give us concrete ask, ask for the next round of state's planning and zoning grants.
Yep. The rest of that's solid, yeah.
Okay. So we want this one to be first. We want, we're just gonna put it on top and then the second one will be implementation committee and the third one will be housing production plan.
Yeah. Yeah, HPP, it sounds like we're just asking for a little bit of, you know, more data to back up and graphics for work, which you know can get expensive.
Yeah.
But then it's like, you know, we also want help with more technical aspects of the plan.
Right. It's more like giving us maps of things.
Yeah, it's good.
Cool. Yep. All right. Well, we'll be ready to submit that by the end of the week. Exciting. And again, thank you to Andrew and Bella for that. And that concludes the things on our agenda, except one little update from me that just came through. I've been, I, I've been wanting to, I mentioned this at a previous meeting too, reach out. I reached out to the Habitat for Humanity and they finally, we finally connected. Just wanting to establish a relationship there. They have like somewhat of a relationship with the previous chair, but nothing really came to fruition there. But they mentioned that they're, you know, excited by the opportunity that we're reaching out to them. But how it normally works is either like they find, work with, just directly with a private landowner who might wanna like sell to them at a discounted rate and this town kinda stays out of it. Or the town can get more involved in like supporting with CPA funds, helping them purchase a lot or help them subsidize some of the construction costs. And so considering we have used zero dollars of our CPA money that is earmarked for housing, 10% of what's in our pot is earmarked for housing, which I found out is ju- just shy of $300,000. We would be using, we have almost two, $3 million in CPA funds that we can use. 10% of that is restricted to housing, but then seven, and 10% is restricted to other things. But 70% is unrestricted and can be used for other.
For any.
For any.
Anything in the categories, yeah.
Right. So we could use more than just the $300,000, but there's 300, basically almost 300,000 that has not been touched, has not been used and could be used towards housing. So I flagged for them a parcel that I thought might be interesting, cause they're looking for ones that have town, that have sewer and water that are already cleared, relatively flat. And that, you know, would be a good space for a home. They do small scale, which I think is something that would fit with the nature of Hatfield, meaning they don't really do more than five or six units. So they said if you wanted to do a, you know, a giant cult, you know, development, that's not us, call Valley CDC or somebody else like. But if for one-off couple of units here or there, that's on a particular parcel that we think, find interesting, totally reach out to them. And so I gave, I, I did that. And they have a committee that reviews parcels, so I sent them their way. Kyle, building inspector, said that he has contact information for the landowner of the parcel that I was talking about and he's gonna reach out to them and see if they'd be interested in that. But just flagging that, you know, that would be helpful. A unit or two of affordable housing at a time would be helpful in us trying to make our way towards 10% affordable housing in town. And right now we're at 2.8%. And the state is asking and requiring and some, um, with a, with a stick.
The question is where are we gonna put the, where are we gonna put these houses?
Well, right. That's why it's a parcel here and a parcel there with Habitat for Humanity.
You do like one a year. They don't just come in and bang out a bunch of buildings.
Exactly.
Very slow process.
So that's why I feel like that's, would be a perfect first step in helping build affordable housing. And Hatfield is getting a relationship with something like them because we're, as a municipality, we're not in any position to be like building affordable housing, right? So at least right now. And there might be more that comes out with the housing production plan and things like that, more tactics and strategies. Cause they did ask like, oh, are there like areas in town that you'd wanna see this and da-da-da? And I was like, we're not there yet. That will come hopefully in the next couple of years with the housing production plan and then updated zoning and us being more proactive in general around housing and our zoning. So I thought it was a good initial conversation. We, I just wanted to get like on their radar because they haven't done anything in Hatfield, but they have done a lot in surrounding towns. So the other thing that they brought up is that they are looking, because they serve Hampshire and Franklin County, they are looking for warehouse space. And they said, we'd love to be in Hatfield or Whately in that area on the 510 corridor.
There's gotta be an option for that.
So I referred them to the, the former food bank property. There's land, there's property for lease.
Property?
Warehouse space for lease, the food bank property, Myers Produce. And I just threw that out there. I also, they also said that the state, they're looking for letters of support from municipalities to state to give them earmarked funds to help them secure warehouse space. And they asked us if we would write a letter of support in the state earmarking that. And so this is a long story of me getting to the point of asking y'all, do you feel comfortable if we, I wrote a letter of support saying that the Hatfield Planning Board supports, you know, the state supporting Habitat for Humanity and finding a warehouse or fund, helping them get funding for warehouse.
We'd support that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm down with that.
Okay, cool.
And I would encourage you to seek a similar letter from the town administrator and or select board.
Yeah, I was gonna reach to, reach out to Andrew after I talked to you guys about this.
Right. You did one at a time. It's small steps.
Small steps.
Yep. And you know, like, we helped them with a letter. They'll remember us when.
When you're looking for a place.
When they're looking for, not just for the warehouse, but hopefully to build a house also.
Yeah.
So, okay, great. And, you know, general call out to y'all in the public, like if you know of a, someone that's willing to, to help out and sell a lot to Habitat for Humanity to help increase our affordable housing stock in Hatfield, we would appreciate it. And there would probably be some town CPA support if it was at a reasonable.
So are we, are we looking to not create developments?
We're not, we're not not trying to. It's, I think it's a, that's a bigger impact on the community to do that. And so, and we haven't really done the due diligence in determining where we would want to target that type of development. And so I think we would be, as a board and as a town, it would be a little premature for us to be trying to solicit a large-scale thing right now. I do think it's something we, we should be doing.
Right.
In the near future and creating with an, in my mind, an open space development by, an open space development where the lots are smaller, more quote-unquote affordable, but you know.
I'm thinking of the boil farm behind my house.
So yeah, these are all things that I don't think we're, I, I don't know.
There yet.
Yeah. There needs to be thought putting, thought putting behind of where we would, we would want to increase development.
So just a really quick comment on that idea. I don't think anybody's looking to build a Hampshire Heights in Hatfield or Florence Heights in Hatfield. We're not looking to develop.
Low-income housing.
Low-income compressed, really high, high-density housing.
And our zoning doesn't allow really for that anyway.
Right. We're, we're not looking to create just a generic subdivision. I would be very interested in any developer that proposes a clean pathway to homeownership for younger couples or folks starting out or even older folks who are looking to downsize. I think that's the sort of middle, missing middle, if you will, in homeownership. We've got plenty of houses that are going up that are $700,000, $900,000 and there are apartments all over the place. Of course, folks can't really afford that.
Need like thousand-square-foot ranch homes.
You need something that's a step above the $1,800 a month apartment.
Yep.
But isn't gonna cost somebody $4,000 a month in a mortgage payment.
Right.
And that's gonna be between $300,000 and $400,000 market sale price. The only way to do that is to have, have it be a smaller house.
On a smaller.
On a smaller lot where the lot or the development is largely subsidized.
Yep.
And.
And I think there's a relationship to be made with like Valley CDC or like some developer that is more of a nonprofit and in heart and spirit that is going to try to work with the community and meeting those needs.
As, as long as their goal is geared towards self-ownership, not towards development of a bunch of housing that we're just going to rent out in perpetuity.
Landlords.
Yeah.
Yep.
So my house.
And so I think that just needs to be, there's a more, we need to be more proactive in that and I don't think we're ready to be that proactive yet.
So my house is a modular house.
Yep.
And I think that's.
That's another option.
It's a really good option for affordable housing. I paid way less than it would've cost to stick-built our house by, by far. And it's so much faster.
A basic modular house is $360,000.
Right.
That's before delivery. That doesn't include land. That doesn't include a foundation.
A modular ADU, so like.
Is only $250,000.
Yeah. So that's what you're, but that's like 800 square feet, right? So that's what I mean. You need like that, that small ranch type or small cape style home.
There's no easy answers.
And there's no easy, that's the whole thing. It's like, that's why it's a problem around the country is like, it's, they wanna look at the government to help, but the government can only do so much. It's the private landowners and the market. It's like, it's, there's no like silver bullet for that. So. With that, thank you, everyone. Anything else that you'd like to bring up now, otherwise?
I'm hungry. I wanna go home. I move adjourned.
All right. Our next meeting is Wednesday, February 5th. Like I said, we're gonna be having the, the site plan review, likely site plan review for the Starlight Restaurant and Pinball Play, Pinball and Pizza. And we will also be having a public hearing on our proposed updated ADU bylaw changes. So.
There's a motion on the floor.
Come bright and bushy-tailed, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed. And there's a motion on the floor to adjourn.
Seconded.
Aye.
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 All right.
Aye, aye, aye.
January 8th is adjourned at 7:09.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.